February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Board of County Commissioners, Business Meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present with the... I told you, all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Ty Mensah, who is excused for a family matter. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you can all now be seated. I thought I'd at least give one laugh, never mind, because I thought it was funny, because you guys were already sitting down.
Oh.
Okay.
Didn't.
All right, yeah, bad joke. I would now like to ask the Commissioner sitting next to me to do the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We would also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial, and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squaxon Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Thank you, Commissioner Mejia. Our next item is the Proclamation for African-American History Month.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fournier. So today, we join in paying tribute to the generations of African-Americans who have faced adversity to achieve full citizenship in American society and who still continue to overcome injustices today. We want to recognize the achievements of these members in Thurston County who contribute to our community's rich history and culture. We will now start our program and hear from various leaders who have shaped Thurston County and continue to make Thurston County great. We will start with Larry Jefferson, and I will go ahead and introduce him. Larry Jefferson has been a public defense attorney in Thurston County for more than sixteen years, and previously worked as a public defender in Kent and Seattle. He helped establish Thurston County's pre-trial diversion program, First Look Program, True Blood Diversion Program, and Felony Leadership Improvement Project. Mr. Jefferson managed the county's juvenile court and juvenile drug court for three years. He has received the Thurston County Bigelow Best Attorney Award and the Local Hero Award and the Washington State Bar Association. He is currently the president of the NAACP. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you for having me here today. Again, my name is Larry Jefferson, and at this moment, I am the president of the NAACP of Thurston County. When I look around this room and look at the county commissioners, what I see is a group of heroes. This is a historic moment. It's a historic time. There are lots of things that, I guess, are going wrong. We've had a long history. In fact, we... And this history is tied to the foundation of this country. I recently heard at a Martin Luther King ceremony that we had a foundation of folks that believed in life, liberty, and the pursuit of justice, and they wrote a document and a constitution, but it only applied to some of us and not all of us. And we have fought a civil war where it did not apply to all of us, and it only applied to some of us. And after that civil war, citizens, black citizens who lived in Alabama, what they wanted to do was to make sure that everybody got access to housing, education, and food. And yet, that was fought against. And in eighteen seventy-seven, there was a great compromise. And so after that time, the troops that were there to guard people, after the civil war, left, and a time of domestic terrorism started, and some say it never really finished. But we have had a time where we had a black president, and we are now living in a time where there is a reaction to that. And there are people that are not like us, that for some reason believe in the deprivation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And so what I see here is a group of heroes, of folks who want to stand up against injustice, a group of people who want to make sure that everyone is included, no matter what your gender identity is, the color of your skin, that in Thurston County, if I can steal a little bit from someone who is a little bit more poetic than I am, if I could just find it right here... Nope, I can't, and that's why you can't rely on phones all the time. But if I could steal a little bit from Maya Angelou, that, you know, you may say, you know, bitter and twisted lies in your history, you... I mean, you may seek just to make sure that we're not included, yet we can see a performance like Kendrick Lamar's at the halftime show of the Super Bowl, which said that "I am a proud black man. We do have dignity. We do. We have built this country with our bodies." And what I see happening in Thurston County is that we are rising to the occasion, that in Thurston County, we believe in home for everyone. We are rising together. And so I'm really proud to live in a community where I don't have to, or as a black man, I can feel comfortable knowing that the county commissioners and the citizens here believe that this is for all of us. And so I really thank you for having us here today, and thank you for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Dr. Jackson. Dr. Thelma Jackson is a respected community leader and advocate with a career spanning over fifty years in education, equity, and diversity. She served on the North Thurston School Board for two decades, was president of the Evergreen State College Board of Trustees, and was one of the founding members of the Black Alliance of Thurston County. She retired in twenty twenty, I'll say that retired lightly, from Forsight Consultants, a firm specializing in educational issues, equity, diversity, policymaking, strategic planning, and executive coaching. Dr. Jackson continues to drive impactful change as the administrative administrator of the Northwest Institute for Leadership and Change, a celebrated historian and author of the published book Blacks in Thurston County: Washington, 1950 through 1975, A Community Album, which chronicles the rich history of the black community in the region. She currently serves as a treasurer and board member for the NAACP of Thurston County. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Your acknowledgement today of Black History Month is in a series of proclamations that you've made, and we're only into the middle of February. You honored Dr. Martin Luther King in January. You had a proclamation against hatred and racism in the county and proclaimed your commitment to DEI. And now you proclaim Black History Month, and for that, we are deeply appreciative. I would like to start my comments by saying that in sixteen nineteen, more than four hundred years ago, there landed on the south, on the eastern coast of this country, twenty-plus kidnapped Africans, which was the beginning of the enslavement of many, many more millions to come. That sixteen nineteen project paints a picture of what American history has been like and where enslaved people have been a part of it. Many efforts are underway to destroy the sixteen nineteen project and any other historical reference to the kind of country that America started out being. It's just one example of the typical attempts to rewrite history. And as we talk about African-American history, we are talking about American history. It's not a separate history, and from more than four hundred years ago, African-Americans have been here. As we look at the kind of turmoil we are embroiled in now as a nation, where anyone other than a heterosexual white male is wanted in America, there is an effort underway to eradicate America of anyone other than whites, and we know that as black people, we count in that number. The whole history that talks about reconstruction and the efforts that were put forth and the progress that was made was just flipped overnight, as Larry talked about. We're almost living through another period of reconstruction where everything is attempting to be flipped. Our history is a story of contributions, untold heroes, heroines, she-ros, and daredevils. And when we think in terms of the trials, tribulations, successes, and victories that are mostly untold... So once a year, in the month of February, we turn some attention to African-American or Black History Month so that we can revisit, we can recognize, we can be reminded about the inclusion of this group of people who are really the only people on this soil other than our native brothers and sisters who are here involuntarily. People seem to forget that, and while we now are a nation of immigrants from all over the world, of those groups, we're the only group here involuntarily. And so as we look at the efforts underway to eradicate DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, it's by design that those things in the flip of a switch are being removed all over. And it's to your credit as a county, as county commissioners, that you took the bold position that you did, reinforcing your commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as we see the public outcry happening all over this country, every day, there's a new headline to react to before we can even absorb yesterday's headline. And there are many more days to come. We don't know which shoe is going to drop next, or which group is going to be most affected by whatever action is going on. And I made a comment in an earlier speech where I talked about the fact that while we all came on different ships to this country, we are now in the same boat together. And so we in the African-American community, look at the contributions, look at the successes that have happened, look at how we've played such a critical role in the making of America on the backs of free labor and to become the most industrialized, successful nation in the world. There's a history as to how that came about. There's a history as to who helped make that happen. And so this Black History Observance Time is a very special time for us, because Black History is every day for us, not just the month of February, but it's a time that others pay some attention. So when we think in terms of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, that was won on the blood, sweat, and tears of the African-American community more than any other group, yet all have benefited from it. The Voting Rights Act, that we never would have thought we would be fighting to restore the right to vote again. So these things are being revisited. These things are attempted to be stripped away. And so at this time in our history, when we think in terms of Dr. Carter, who was the father of what started out to be Negro History Week, and now has grown into Negro Black History Month, he made the statement that those who have no record of what their forbears have accomplished lose the inspiration which comes from the teaching of biography and history. And so it's a time for reflection for everyone, not just for African-Americans, but for America in general, and not just the contributions of African-Americans, but any other ethnic group that have contributed to the well-being of this country. So we thank you for the proclamation you're making today, and we know that it is in the spirit that previous proclamations have been made, and for that, I thank you. So I'll just close with a few words from Maya Angelou that Larry already referenced. It's not the same word, but the same poet. And she said, "You may write me down in history with your bitter, twisted lies. You may trod me in the very dirt, but still, like dust, I'll rise." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Next, I would love to introduce Merritt Long. At heart, Merritt is a storyteller. Born and raised in Bussamore, Alabama, just outside of Birmingham, Merritt lived through the years of Jim Crow laws, segregation, and outright racism. Education was a pathway his parents endowed him with, and he graduated from Morehouse College in Atlanta with his bachelor's degree and Seattle University with his master's degree. The storyteller emerged as he wrote, then published his inspirational memoir, My View From the Back of the Bus, in twenty twenty. Merritt chronicles his life, challenges, and triumphs as he navigates through a world that sought to suppress him, but in which he ultimately rises professionally and personally. An Olympia resident for almost fifty years, Merritt has been involved in a variety of community organizations. He and his wife Marcia founded the Learning Seed Foundation, which has awarded almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to primarily students of color who are continuing their education past high school. Merritt?
Thank you, Commissioner. As you were reading my bio for a moment there, it was like, who is that guy? Because that's me. Well, thank you so much, Commissioners, for having us here today. And I also want to just take a second to acknowledge my colleagues that are presenting, Dr. Thelma Jackson. Okay. And Barrister Larry. So glad that... I'm fortunate enough to be on the program today with those two individuals. Today is very serendipitous for me, because about eighteen years ago, when I was the lottery director, I was asked by the Chair of the Liquor Board to make a presentation during Black History Month. And the presentation that I made was my first bus ride. And in making that presentation, that became the impetus and the start of my book, My View From the Back of the Bus. And as a side note, I have been fortunate to have time with a number, or several iconic figures, and someone who was one of the leaders, one of the trailblazers in the civil rights moment, I was able to sit next to in Yakima, Washington, and that was Rosa Parks. So first of all, I'm just spellbound and didn't know what to say. And finally, when I got nerve enough to say something, I introduced myself, and she said to me, "Merritt, what are you doing way out here?" It was like sugar. And ironically, my mom and my grandmother had passed away prior to that time, and I felt, once I was next to Sister Rosa, they were next to me. All of us were together. So that's a feeling that I will never forget. What I'm going to do is focus on one individual who has impacted my life and impacted the world, and that's Muhammad Ali. And I was fortunate enough in nineteen sixty-seven to meet him and have time with him on three different occasions. And if everyone is willing, I will share what happened. Is that okay? Right. In nineteen sixty-seven, I was a junior at Morehouse College. I was leaving the campus of our sister school, Spelman College, when I noticed an immaculate white four-door Cadillac making a left turn entering Spelman College campus. The Cadillac screeched to a halt. To my surprise, the black-tenanted window on the backseat passenger side rolled down. To my surprise, it was Muhammad Ali. He poked his head out of the window and said, "Do you know where Spelman College is at?" And my first thought, I flashed back to my ninth-grade teacher, who would say, "You never end a sentence with a preposition." So one self, one self of mine was, "Okay, Merritt, you need to let the champ know, because you're out and about, you're around the world. You might want to watch that. You might want to deal with that a little differently." Now, that was one self. The other self said to self, "Are you crazy, man? Are you going to try to correct the champ?" Fortunately, self got the best of my other self. And I said, "Mrs. Chapman, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to do anything to correct the champ." So that was my first encounter with Muhammad Ali. That day, or the day, after I gave direction to Muhammad Ali at Spelman College, he walked into my religion and philosophy class led by Dr. Rogers at Clark College. All of a sudden, we had a visiting professor. Ali just walked into the class, and by simply walking into the class, Dr. Rogers immediately moved out of the way and pushed himself back to the wall. Now, I've been around since then, and not so much then, but I've never seen one person walk into the room and the person who's in charge just get out of the way. So it was like, man, this is a powerful dude. Muhammad Ali proceeded to give the class a lecture about the negative connotations associated with the word "black" and the positive attributes associated with the word "white." His observations included white hat, good guy; black hat, bad guy; angel food cake, white; devil food's cake, black; black male, bad; black hair, nappy, curly hair; white lie, good, not so bad; black magic, evil; black cat, bad luck; white angels, good; good hair, straight hair. This impromptu lecture provided by Muhammad Ali focused on how he felt some white people tried to consciously and subconsciously influence the thinking and self-concept of black people and perceptions of black people by associating negativity, in some case, evil, with the word "black." Muhammad Ali, in conclusion, was someone people either loved or hated, no in-between. Those who loved him hung on his every word like honey from the heavens. Our tastes always led to another, and then another, and then another. There's no such thing as getting full on only brief moments of satisfaction. Ali's fan became part of his mojo, their love, their loyalty, their energy, smiles, and constant adulation provided that boost to take his skills and endurance to another level when facing a formidable opponent. The connection between Ali and his fans resembled a two-way power surge. First, he would power up the fans, and then the fans would send their energy to him, a winning combination. From the evolution of the Louisville lip named Cassius Clay to the draft-dodging communist named Muhammad Ali, to the enduring legacy he left behind, Ali's life and times embodied the period in which he lived. He personified an era that questioned authority, demonstrated the power that one, that one person can exert, and helped to dispel the myths and stereotypes of being black in America. He was instrumental in causing me to rethink how I thought about myself, the world, and how I might make a difference in the broader world. A true role model, he exemplified the truism that one person can make a difference. One person can make a difference. And actually, one person is really the theme and the bottom line of my comments. I think about the commissioners, all of you, when you were running for office and you were elected. I'm sure you came to office with at least one specific issue, at least one that you want to pursue, whether that was environmentally related, whether that was in housing, affordable housing, access to housing, health... healthcare, the list goes on and on. But one of the things that I would think and believe, and I'm sure you do, and that is, you have to come together as one. Because individually, you're not going to be able to achieve the goal. You won't be able to do it, but collectively, you can. Last comment. Marcia and I, uh, Commissioner Carolina talked about the Learning Seed Foundation. That's been our lane. That's what we said we were gonna focus on and make that a priority. And I know with all the talent in this room, a number of people are doing just what I said in terms of the focus on one, if not several, things. Uh, with those comments, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Merritt. I, uh, really want to thank all of our speakers today for, uh, coming here today and as well as all of those who are joining us in this, uh, celebration of this proclamation. I, uh, want to take a moment, uh, to highlight that, uh, as you've heard, many of these are authors, and I have some of the books up here. If you would like to continue to educate yourself on your journey and educate about some amazing members of our community who have done amazing things and, um, are published authors. And I think there is, uh, some information on, uh, where these books are available outside. Um, but I, again, I'm just very thankful to have such incredible members uh, living here in Thurston County and contributing so much to our community. Uh, with that chair, would you like me to read the proclamation?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So the Thurston County Proclamation for African-American History Month. Whereas in sixteen nineteen, twenty-plus kidnapped Africans were brought to these shores for more than two hundred and fifty years, millions of human beings of African descent were enslaved and were regarded as three-fifths of a person by the U.S. Constitution. And whereas, as a result of the determination, hard work, and perseverance against all odds, black Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions in all aspects of society. And whereas during African American History Month, it started in nineteen seventy-six, the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our cultural, spiritual, political, and economic development are celebrated. And whereas the double, the NAACP champions racial justice and aims to improve the political, educational, social, and economic status of all, eliminating racial prejudice and raising awareness against discrimination across Thurston County and the state of Washington. And whereas African-American authors play a crucial role in preserving and celebrating history and community memory, and their books are distributed in bookstores, bookstores both locally and nationally. And whereas black history is past, present, and future, while commemorating the outstanding legacy and strength of black people is important, commitment to empowering a successful future is just as critical. Black history is not just something of the past. It is living and alive and is being made every single day. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of the Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-four as Black History Month in Thurston County and calls on all residents to actively engage in events, discussions, and reflections to honor the immense contributions of African-Americans to our community and our nation. Adopted this eighteenth day of February twenty twenty-five.
We're gonna take a brief recess. Before we do that, I have to make a confession. I skipped over something. I saw Dr. Jackson come in and I got really excited about hearing her talk. So I forgot to ask for approval of the agenda. And I didn't want to keep her waiting. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
My second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Now, if you'd like to join us for a picture out on the steps, we'll do that next.
Yeah, we're not.
It's just part of our consultation. Oh, I lost my glasses.
Uh oh.
Here in my pocket.
All right, all the commissioners present are back in the room. So we'll bring the meeting back to order. Uh, next item is public comment.
Commissioner Fournier, just one minute.
Man. Having a rough time. All right, uh, thank you. Welcome back from recess. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, I will read the guidelines for public comments. The Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public at all meetings. However, there are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most of our meetings are televised. General speaking guidelines, please introduce yourself, including the address you reside in Thurston County. Please address the board, not the audience or staff. Please silence your cell phones. The board does not respond to public comments. On a need basis, the county manager will follow up with specific items. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes to address the board. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. The board reserves the right to restrict the person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. No comments that are lewd and offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outburst outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business. All materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter forty-two fifty-six R C W. Remarks about a pending land use permit or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal are prohibited. Thank you for your cooperation as well. Uh, no electioneering.
Vice Chair, if I could, just one, uh, point of clarification. Uh, public comment is for four minutes.
Okay. Well, the guidelines here, it says three, but...
Our apologies.
Uh, first, public commenter, uh, Mr. Justin Russell, please step up.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for having me here. It's gonna be pretty quick. Um, with the new CAD program that's going on in Thurston County, I don't believe it's following Title twenty-four. And in Title twenty-four, it states that the director shall make a site visit to determine whether or not any critical areas are gonna affect the building area. And they need to make the determination that there are critical areas. What's happening is, uh, people are coming in and getting misinformation from the little planners that come to the front desk that may or may not, you know, fully know what they're talking about. I was in on one where he had a stream delineation done, and there's no wetlands on the property, but he was sent away. He could not apply because the, uh, planning assistant said they needed a wetland delineation. But the planner couldn't determine the difference between a wetland delineation and a stream delineation, even though the property didn't show any wetlands, just a stream. There's also, you know, this is gonna put us in a bind with this as far as getting any other applications in. It's just gonna take more and more time. The time's getting wasted with this. We're not following the rules that are set in place by Title twenty-four. And if you have any questions, I'd feel free to answer them to the best of my ability right now.
Uh, I'll just, I can repeat this, some of the speaking guidelines. No, what did I, um, we don't, we don't answer questions or public comment. So if you have any specific comments that you'd like to provide to the county manager in writing, then that's how you can get a response back.
Okay, and that, that will come, but I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on with this new CAD review.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's being mismanaged. Um, the people that are being sent up to answer questions are telling us that on a property that has no wetlands and just the three-hundred-foot revert, review area, if it even touches the property, the wetlands, you know, may potentially be three-hundred-plus feet away that we're supposed to go out and get a wetland delineation. Now, this is just blowing people's money like left and right when they don't need to be spending it. So it's, it's kinda ridiculous. It needs to be some oversight, some training, and the director needs to step up and do their job. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Yep.
Do we have your contact information?
Uh, Leonard does. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next commenter, Gordon White.
That's me. Hey, thank you. For the record, I am Gordon White. I live at twenty-two, four-three-one Columbia Street, southwest in Olympia, Washington. I appreciate the opportunity the board provides for public comment. I also feel like I've been among giants of good in Thurston County today, so I, I wanna do the, the flex, if possible, right? That was such a great, um, opportunity for celebrating people here, so thank you for doing that. So I tend these comments to, as suggesting some ideas, I provided you a more detailed memo or letter around what I'm gonna talk about in terms of U G A swap issue, expansion of U G As, and, and the value of doing more thorough environmental review. So thank you for, also, first though, I wanna thank you for the action you took two weeks ago to set it aside, the, the proposal for policies around how to do that sort of thing, swaps. I appreciate that. I appreciate, too, the recommending that it go back to the Southern Regional Planning Commission for more, uh, review by the, your management group. I think that's what you did, Commissioner, maybe. So thank you. A few key points. I think in-depth environmental review is essential as we look at expansion of any U G A, whether it involves a sop, a swap, or something else. And I provide a lot of detail in my, in my letter to you around how that can be beneficial. I don't think we have to be afraid of doing an E I S review. It can off, offer more solutions and prevent things ahead of time. Another thing I reviewed was, uh, the Grand Mount, the most recent expansion of a U G A was in Grand Mount. That was last year, and it was done through a, a different device of environmental review called mitigated determination of determination of nonsignificance. So it's non, nonsignificant impact if you follow the rules when it gets to a project level, but nothing at the broader scope of what it means for the area of Grand Mount in terms of the impact in the environment. And it's a pretty sensitive environment out there because they have a type-one critical air, critical aquifer recharge area. It's very close to the Tlish River, and so I provide details around even a pretty good stormwater manual that you all have. It's a really great stormwater team you have. It doesn't guarantee that pollution from groundwater doesn't go into the water table there. So, uh, an E I S would get to this, to a more level of detail there. Another key part of the, um, findings in the, in the growth, in the Grand Mount U G A expansion was the use of the industrial land survey that was done a year ago. And it misuse an, an aspect of, a statement from that that was done in the summary. And it really stands out as a mistake, um, that it says this, "The twenty-twenty-three industrial land study finds that the county lacks larger parcels that could accommodate larger scale industrial uses." That's in the findings effect to, to enable and justify the U G A expansion in Grand Mount. I provide detail in my memo, and I'll just read this. Costco Regional Distribution Center, y'all know where that is, right? On Ninety-third? It's huge. It's on eighty acres. But it's in, in, in twenty-twenty, it was for twenty-acre parcels. It wasn't large enough. So it could have been justification from this study, "Oh, we need to expand on Ninety-third." The, the U G A at Ninety-third, right? However, we know through partial consolidation, by the time in twenty-twenty-one, partial consolidation was happening, Costco put it together, and they built a huge distribution center there. There is no, no hindering distribution center, a major warehouse. That, there's no hesitation done for that. So the, I citing that section of the industrial land survey was inappropriate for these, those kinds of actions. I also think, uh, you have, you have a real good complaint coming up from your planning commission and a really, and an attempt at an environmental review on that. And so looking at that carefully will help provide a really po- positive future, I think, for legis decision-making in Thurston County. So I'm encouraged, encouraged by the climate actions that are in it, and that'll be also be helped by the environmental review that's being done. So, anyway, appreciate, appreciate your time here, and there you go.
Thank you, Mr. White. Uh, next up, Jessica Grub.
Hi there. My name is Jessica Grub, and I reside at seven-seven-three-three Kerba Road Northeast, Olympia. Um, I've lived in Thurston County, uh, for most of my life, and I've been a Realtor in Thurston County for over seventeen years. I am here today to express my concerns about the Board of Equalization Office. I've challenged my property tax assessment for the past three years. I've submitted information each year by the deadline in person. I wanted a hearing to actually be able to speak to the board about the assessment. I have had a lot of trouble with communication with the Board of, uh, Equalization Office. It takes days or weeks to get a response to emails and voicemails, and nobody ever seems to be available in that office to even stamp documents that are being dropped off. Last time I dropped documents in their Dropbox, I also emailed them and asked for a response to verify they were received. It took seven days for them to respond to that email. I just received a letter in the mail stating I'd finally been assigned a hearing date for the initial challenge three years ago. The letter was dated February sixth. It was postmarked on February seventh in Tacoma, which means it would have ended back up in the Olympia Post Office on Saturday, February eighth, and in my box, in my mailbox, probably Monday, February tenth. This letter states that my hearing date is March twelfth. If I have any other evidence to submit for review, that deadline to submit documents is February tenth. I've waited three years for this hearing to receive a letter on February tenth that also states that my deadline to submit additional information is that same day. Looks like the person in charge of sending this letter either forgot to send it for quite a while, or they intentionally, or they intentionally mailed it out so late that I wouldn't have any time to submit my additional information. This is also assuming that I get my mail each and every day. I have a security mailbox, so I do not. I want today for someone to accept my additional evidence that I have to submit to the B O E and to have something in writing stating that the documents were received, and even though they are past the deadline on this letter, that my additional evidence will, will be reviewed prior to my hearing date. I don't want my hearing date to change. I've waited way too long for this. While checking on my B O E, or checking on the submittals from last fall, I went into the assessor's office with questions about the replacement cost new on my cost valuation report that had been used to calculate the value of my home. It was discovered that my property was given a higher quality rating than the finishes used in the home actually warranted. So my property taxes, the entire time I've lived in this home, have been higher than they should have been. No county appraiser has ever set foot in my home to make an actual determination of the quality of the finishes of my home. Somebody basically made a judgment call based on how the outside of my house looked. I've since submitted photos to the county appraisers, and for this last year only, they did a small correction to my value, but this could easily be remedied by having an appraiser accompany the building inspectors on the final inspection and taking photos or notes about the finishes throughout. I also have complaints about the building inspectors from the time that my house was built. My inspector signed off on my mechanical inspection, even though the H VAC contractor did not have the kitchen exhaust vent properly vented to the outside of the home, which is the current building code. I would have been, it would have been obvious to an inspector with no insulation or drywall in the home to see this, uh, flaw. I just discussed this with the building department, and they said that they are not on the job site every day, so he didn't know why somebody wouldn't have, would have signed off on this prior to the next phase of construction being allowed, but that their inspections are just, quote, "spot inspections," and they may not actually be looking for things that aren't up to code. This is the job of the licensed contractor to do the job correctly. I now have black mold in my attic, and it's gonna cost me thirty-five-hundred dollars to remediate. When you build a new home, you pay a large fee, permit fees, in order to be able to build, and you're required to have inspections at specific phases of the build. Can I finish? It's quick.
You, you can, but you can also send me that.
I'm going to.
I know you will.
Uh, it's just a little bit more. Um, you have to have inspections at specific phases of the build, and you aren't allowed to, to pass and go on to the next building phase. Aren't our building inspectors, inspectors a safeguard to make sure that all homes built in our county meet the minimum building code requirement for health and safety reasons?
Email that all to me, please. Thank you, Jessica.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Brett Trowbridge.
Brett Trowbridge, fifty-nine-eleven Hanson Street Southeast, uh, on Patterson Lake. I'm here on my usual subject. Again, the steering committee has met with Hernandez, the, um, contractor from Seattle, and now they say that, um, they wanna use Endothal and Imaprazir to clear out this boat channel between the north and south parts of our lake under the, um, railroad trestle. On this map, which I brought in to have distributed to you, have you received it, on this chart? Both of those are in the conditional range. This is the thing that's obviously put out by the county, like everything I show you. This is the current assessment by the environmental health people as to how safe these herbicides are, and both Imaprazir and Endothal are in the conditional. You know, up here are the ones that have passed. Here's the ones that are conditional, and here's the ones that have failed. Glysofate is the very last one. It's totally failed. Now, our steering committee and Hernandez originally came up with, they wanted Glysofate to clear out these lily pads. Fortunately, there were people involved who decided that that wasn't a good idea, which I think may have involved you, certainly Mr. Gelder, and certainly people from environmental health like Mr. Whitford. And so, uh, they announced that, no, um, we wouldn't be using Glysofate. So now they say that they want Imaprazir and Endothal, but they're in the conditional range. Remember, this, this is just for use in general in the county. You know, should we use this in Capitol Forest to get rid of some weeds? You know, should we put this along the roadway? Certainly, there should be a whole different standard as to whether gonna put that in our drinking water, which is what the south end of Patterson Lake is, 'cause it's in the McAllister Springs District. Certainly, there's got to be a decision made about this, and I imagine it'll be made by the Board of Health probably in a couple months, unless you guys have just pulled some kind of switcheroo or something like you've done in the past. So that's what I'm looking forward to, and if that's not going to happen, I'd like to know. I don't even understand what the composition of the Board of Health is now. It's confusing to me, and maybe someone can clarify it for me. So again, what I suggest is, let's just use harvesting, just pull the, um, lily pads. You know, you could get a couple Boy Scout troops with a couple canoes, and you could probably clear it out, you know, in about forty-five minutes. Wide enough for a boat to go through, and you'd do that two or three times a year, and that would do it. You wouldn't have to use Imaprazir and Endothal, which, uh, are hazardous to human and are toxic. You wouldn't have to use Imaprazir and Endothal, which are hazardous to human and are toxic, according to this thing put out by your own, very own county. Why not use ground, ground sheeting? Just don't let the sunlight get down there and you won't have any lily pads growing at all. Instead, what you'll have, of course, is algae. You know, whichever one you're trying to combat, you're facilitating the other by what you're doing. If you get rid of lily pads, more sun gets into the water and you have more algae. If you get rid of algae, then you're going to have more lily pads. Either way, what you're doing is fertilizing them. You know, if you kill the stuff with herbicides, let it drop to the bottom and rot for 10 years in a row, that's going to fertilize both the algae blooms and the lily pads. So the way to get rid of them is to remove the nutrients through harvesting or just like I say, a troop of Boy Scouts, that's the easiest way. You know, they say, well, we need divers. Well, not under the trestle, we're talking ankle teep, you know? It really would be pretty easy to do without having to use these chemicals. So I think we need a lot of leadership in all of the lake programs. It's not only Patterson Lake, but Lake Lawrence and Long Lake have had more algae blooms than we have, although we haven't been treated and they've been treated for 20 years. They're doing the very same thing that our steering committee wants to do. They use herbicides and they use alum treatments and it hasn't worked, especially on Lawrence Lake. So why should we continue doing it? So I actually have 30 seconds left.
Thank you, Mr. Trowbridge. Next speaker, Geraldine, what is it? Geraldine, Diney? Geraldine Diney?
Mr. Fournier, proper pronunciation.
Anti, anti Geraldine.
My name is Geraldine Maxfield. I am the agriculture teacher at Tenino High School and this is my 31st year, so I've been there for a little bit. If you want to know stories about him as a student, let me know.
That was her first, I was her first student.
Yeah.
And I tried to break her.
He didn't. So I want to thank the, the Board of County Commissioners for recognizing an organization such as the, the National FFA Organization. We, as ag teachers, have an opportunity to work with amazing kids and you'll get to hear some of them. And I'm just going to start out with the boring stuff as then, that's the history. In 1917, there was an act made, the Smith Hughes Act, which allowed for agriculture to be taught in the classroom. Even back in 1917, they were looking at, wait a minute, we need to make sure children understand agriculture. And then that kind of opened the door for 1928, for the National Future Farmers of America was built by a group of boys, somewhere in the Midwest, Kansas. And, and it just kind of blows my mind. I tell my students, in 1928, in Kansas, a group of boys started a club. Pre-television, pre-internet. In 1935, seven years later, Tenino FFA started. And just a handful of years later, Yelm FFA started in 1941. So it spread like wildfire across the United States. And then in 1965, the Future Farmers of America merged with the New Farmers, which the New Farmers was the, the group of African-American students who started their own clubs. So then we merged in 1965. Took a few more years to allow girls to be in there, 1969. Girls have kind of taken over a little bit. Don't, don't tell Mr. Mount that. But, so 1969, girls were allowed. And then in 1980, they changed their name and it was no longer Future Farmers of America because it really was more than just farming. It was leadership. It was community. And so this organization is growing more than just farmers and advocating for agriculture, advocating for communities and for individual growth and leadership in these young people. So the FFA is going strong. 1928 is when it started and it's still going strong. And I don't want to, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and let the, the young kids take over. I just wanted to share that, that history with you so you had kind of a perception of what was going on.
Ms. Maxfield, next, Inaia? Inavi, Matt, he even, he even wrote it out for Inavi.
Hello, I'm Inavi Rodriguez. I'm the president of the Tenino FFA chapter. I'd just like to say, to start off, thank you so much for having us today. As my amazing advisor talked about, we are so much more than just agriculture now and we are built off of these three main pillars. They're called our quality standards. The three quality standards are growing leaders, building, building communities and strengthening agriculture. And these three main pillars are really what uplift our nationwide organization, which actually has a million members across America. So if we are just a small chapter and we do what we can for Thurston County, for our amazing county that we're working to improve every single day, but there are so many other chapters across this country who do just as much as us and it's everyone working just to improve where they're from, which is so important to recognize the beauty in your town and work towards improving your own life and the life of those people around you, which I know the Board of Commissioners can totally understand. These three quality standards have really changed my life. You know, a couple of years ago, I would be terrified to stand right here and talk to these people, but now after I've grown my leadership within the FFA, I can do it and I can be confident in myself that I can hold myself with dignity and I can speak to people like this. I've also seen it in all of my peers, you know? The two girls who are going to speak after me, I know they feel the same way. And I know that as a chapter, when I look around at my town, there are so many different things that we have done that have truly strengthened our community. And there's so many things from giving out toys to kids who need it, to recognizing our veterans on Veterans Day. We do everything and it is truly a blessing to be able to be a part of that. And I wouldn't change it for the world. And I know that everything that I learn in FFA will carry with me like it has these past few years forever and into the future of my life. And I want to be able to apply that forever and I am truly in debt to this organization and to this chapter, as I feel like a lot of people are because we do so much. And I just want to say thank you for recognizing us and for all of the amazing things we do.
All right, Navea. Or whoever was walking up next.
Hello, I'm Grace Lynn Sweet, not Navea.
Sorry.
Um, as an FFA member, we are extremely proud of the effort that we put into our projects. My personal favorite is our Holiday House that we put on every single year. The Holiday House is an event that the Tenino FFA puts on to provide children with free gifts for the holidays. Last year, we were able to stuff 100 stockings for homeless as a whole class. And we were also able during the Holiday House, which we put on together, we go and we shop for gifts that, with the money that we make in selling wreaths. We get to go and we get to buy a bunch of different gifts for different types of kids. A hundred, 99 children received gifts for the holidays last year. It was very, very successful. I was so grateful that I got to help out and making sure that the children found the perfect gifts for the holidays that would really, yeah. And that's, that's the Holiday House.
All right, now Navea.
I'm Navea Vasquez and I am the reporter for the Tenino FFA chapter. I'd like to speak about something that I am extremely proud of personally. My personal favorite event that we do is our Veterans Day. We have one main thing in common with veterans, us FFA students. We look really good in uniform. It goes way beyond that. It's truly about what the uniform stands for. Hard work, selflessness, and dedication. FFA works really hard with all that they do. I remember telling my mom when I first started FFA as a freshman, that I didn't think it should just stand for the Future Farmers of America, but more the Future Families of America. Because what once started out as once a simple farming and agriculture turned into a family made up of youth who recognized that they could take the qualities from farming and turn it into something more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kyla and I am from the Yelm FFA chapter. I think something that makes Yelm FFA really, really unique is our commitment to service. FFA's motto is learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. In Yelm, I think a lot of us in here know about the levy, which just recently failed and failed two times prior. And I think it's really clear to myself and the rest of my community that more service and more volunteer work is really crucial in our community right now, but it has been for a long time. And I feel like FFA has stepped up in a way that I really haven't seen even from some of the adults in my community. And I think we've been able to kind of separate where we're going to make sacrifices that don't just benefit us. We don't just close into this little box and focus on ourselves in these hard times. We've been able to still go out and make impact. And so the biggest product that I've seen that is what we did at Yelm Community Services. The YCS has our food bank and also a housing facility and we were able to help them rebuild a thrift store that brought nearly $5,000 to them just in November and December. And we don't have a lot of transportation to do those things in Yelm. Kids don't even have transportation to sports, but we still made that happen in FFA because of our morals and because of the things that we believe in ourselves and the things that we are teaching other students who join our club. I think those messages about leadership and about living a life of service and the importance of being a part of your community and giving back in the ways that you can, those are something that I'm going to take with me for the rest of my life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Colton Nash. I am a member of the Yelm FFA chapter and I took a little more, more of a personal approach with this, but I've always been a very timid and shy person, at least I was. And it almost didn't get better with COVID. I, it got worse. I was horrible. I barely talked to anybody and none of my teachers basically knew who I was. And when I got to ninth grade, I finally decided I was going to change and FFA helped me do that. I joined FFA and just found my community in the different competitions and activities that I do. And through FFA, I've just learned that everybody has a place and that I'm not alone. Nobody's alone. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Joe.
I also want to call out Holden because he didn't mention this, but he is a youth member of our Thurston County Fair Board, representing the FFA. So thank you for your service on that board as well.
Aubrey Swearingen.
Hello, I'm AJ Swearingen. I'm a member of Yelm FFA. When I first started high school, I had absolutely no idea what FFA was. My teacher was just like, hey, you were interested in this? And I was like, okay, I'll do it. And it's honestly brought out the best in me. I've learned that FFA is so much more than just animals and stuff like that. It's about building community and serving your community. Our FFA has been really dedicated to community service and helping build the community. I think a good example is the Niskali Land Trust. We've been helping them like replant trees and refurbish their environments and I think that's something that's really cool. And like Kyla Pollin said, the YCS services, that was a huge project and it's very awesome how much we were able to help out with that. And I think that FFA is just something that, it's about community, really. It's about finding your people and everyone in FFA helped me do that. So thank you.
Mr. Mounts.
All right. My name's Matt Mounts and I've lived in Thurston County almost 50 years. And I've taught at Yelm High School for 25 of those years. And you can see that whether it's Tenino High School, Yelm High School, this is just a small sliver of what this program produces in kids. Individuals that can come up and speak confidently and be proud of what they've done in their community. I know that, I'll brag about our program and some of our kids just a little bit. Yelm High School, two out of the last five years, has been the largest FFA chapter in the nation. Since I've been at Yelm, it started before I was there, but since I've been at Yelm, we've been named top 10 chapter in the nation 12 times with number one chapter in the nation. I believe it was in 2017. I personally have had over, you know, 2,000 students that I've worked with. I've been lucky enough to take 17 of them back to Nationals in a sense of they won this, they were state champion in the contest they were in. And went back and competed at Nationals. I've had national champions. Kyla last year was fourth place in the nation in prepared public speaking, competing against each state's top, you know, student that they had. And so Yelm FFA has a pretty rich tradition in success and making an impact in their community. And I'd be crazy not to stand in front of you, you've heard it before, but our levy failed and it didn't just fail by a little bit. You all understand politics. It got creamed. And 55% of the people said, I don't want to pay more taxes. And it's going to take us a lot to get out of that deficit. And I think everywhere, every stone we can unturn, everywhere we can ask, how can you help? Just every little bit is going to help make programs like this continue. We don't know where the cuts are going to be. They might be this, they might not. But this is an awesome organization that every kid deserves the opportunity to participate in. Thank you.
Thank you, FFA. I did, I, I got to judge some of their public speaking, I think, last year, two years ago. And some of them I've seen have like even taken even a step, step up. So that was, that was pretty impressive. I'm not seeing anyone else listed on the public comment list. Is there anyone in the audience that we have missed?
I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir. Please step up, state your name and address and you'll be given four minutes.
My name is Danny Hermosillo. I live at 5701 Sixth Avenue Southwest in Tomata, Washington. And I bring two issues before this Board of Commissioners. It's one is pollution, either water, air, or other means of pollution that affect it. And this gentleman has talked about it. But how strong are we, are we to implement what the state has incurred or, or transfer to the county? Under RCWE 46, motor vehicles, our biggest polluters or fleet operators, maybe bus high ride everywhere in this county. And two, interstate trucking and fail, their failure to maintain motor vehicles. And third, this implementation of California standards where I was born and I had to leave 39 years ago. I have tolerated this wishy-washy, what would you call it? Policy. Now, we could either do one, clean it up, clean our cars up, either on federal standards or state standards. But my well-being is determined that. I, I deal with the traffic on Capitol Boulevard every day. I'm sick of having a plume of smoke in my face and these people that fail to maintain their vehicles. I've dealt with your department upstairs to correct my personal property and conveying And issue two, two is crime in this county. How many of people that should be incarcerated stay incarcerated? To affect this life and safety of our well-being. We have a lot of people with drug habits that affect our daily living. Decisions that they didn't make before they ingested this junk on the street affected me in 2020. affected me in 2020. I brought it to the city of Temi and they waived their jurisdiction and brought it to the county, made a shambles of it, severed it three ways. My medical costs weren't taken care of. My constitutional rights were in question. So consider who you hire as deputy prosecutors of this county. I, I don't want to be the judge and jury, okay? And the executioner. I hold it on people like yourselves that are elected to your office.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
I just want a change, maybe this.
Yes, sir.
New will change.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else that has been missed going once? I'm looking on Zoom and all I see is staff, so going twice, moving on. County managers update.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Uh, just wanna give a special thanks to the Director of the Board and the staff's hard work to bring together the African-American History Month. We look forward to continue to bring forward promotions and community groups. Just give, uh, special thanks to staff.
Sir. Uh, next item, consent agenda, items A through U. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to move to approve the consent agenda, A through U.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through U. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Department, items six, Central Services, for on-call architectural engineering and professional consulting service contracts.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Rick Thomas, the Central Services Capital Projects Planning Manager. Central Services solicited requests for qualifications for architect, engineering, professional consulting services for planning, design, construction, and other activities related for county facilities. In November of two thousand twenty-four, fifteen firms submitted proposals in response to our request for qualifications. A committee of Central Services staff evaluated and scored the proposals based on company qualifications, key personnel, experience, past performance, references, and sustainability. The committee selected the top five ranked architects and the top four ranked mechanical, electrical engineering firms to place under contract hereby creating a roster of qualified consultants, which will allow staff to quickly respond to Central Services requirements on an as-needed or on-call basis. Work will be defined on individual task orders with costs for services being negotiated based on pre-established rates. The selected on-call consultants will be awarded two-year base contracts with a potential of three one-year options. Each contract is independent and will be judged separately for extension as determined by Central Services needs. Funding for work performed under the on-call contracts will come from, from a variety of sources. Each on-call consultant will be awarded a $500,000 contract against which individual task orders will be issued. This is the same process utilized by Public Works as we operate to be consistent across the county. This action is needed to support the execution of the county's capital improvement program, which includes projects to maintain and upgrade the county facilities that are vital in serving our community. We request that the Board of County Commissioners approve on-call architectural and engineering and professional consulting services contracts to the following consultants: BCR-A, Hargus Engineering, Inc., Helix Design Group, a division of Shive Hattery, Holtz BHU Engineers, Inc., the Miller Hall Partnership, LLP, Osborne Architect Incorporated, PS, Thomas Architecture Studios, Inc., Tress West Engineers, Inc., and Wood Harbinger, Inc. And authorize the Director of Central Services to execute each contract not to exceed $500,000 and including amendments up to ten percent additional contingency. Have any questions?
Any questions for staff? I see none. Uh, thank you, Rick. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve item six A on the agenda. Do I need to read it or? Okay.
This is a, this is a motion to approve on-call architecture, engineering, professional consulting services contracts with BCR-A, Hargus, Hargus Engineers, Inc., Helix Design Group, A Division of Shive Hattery, Holtz BHU Engineers, Inc., the Miller Hall Partnership, LLP, Osborne Architects Incorporated, PS, Thomas Architecture Studios, Inc., Trey West Engineers, Inc., Wood Harbinger, Inc., and authorize the Director of Central Services to execute each contract not to exceed $500,000, including amendments for up to ten percent additional contingency. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next item, Commissioner Reports. Mr. Klaus, do you have anything you would like to report on?
Yes, I do, thank you. I, I just have a couple of things and I don't need to go into detail on them, but I'm open if, uh, the community has any questions, you're welcome to reach out. Um, as far as committee meetings, I attended the ORCA meeting, Jazzcom, and the Regional Housing Council had a subcommittee, um, group meeting to plan their annual retreat. Um, so that's in the works and that's looking pretty good. I wanna shout out to staff for, um, all their hard work on ensuring that the retreat is successful and I'm looking forward to it. As far as additional meetings, I met with the Presiding Judge of Superior Court. I met with the City Manager and Assistant City Manager of Lacey. I had a one-on-one with Sheriff Sanders. I met with Michael Cade from the Economic Development Council. I had a tour of the Salish Landing site with Planning Commissioner Colin Bartlett. And I met with the nonprofit organization Together to discuss an upcoming conference called Expanding Your Horizons. That is to target young, um, trans girls, girls in school and, um, primarily the community, um. It can be, so it's an upcoming conference at, uh, SPSCC and, um, I can pull up the date too. But it's not necessarily just for, um, youth in Thurston County. It's a workshop with, um, all kinds of different sessions. Uh, it's in steam, so science, technology, engineering arts, and math. And it's happening on Saturday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five this year, at SPSCC. So that's a really exciting, um, event that's coming up soon for young people. And looks like that is it. Thank you.
Mr. Klaus, Mr. Grant?
Uh, yeah. I did to kind of talk a little bit about what's been going on the last couple of weeks. So, um, for regional and county engagement activities, um, I attended the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency onboarding, uh, trying to get a little understanding of, of how that board works as an alternate representative. And then attended Thurston Regional Planning Council as, as an alternate. Was in, went ahead and attended the Transportation Policy Board meeting. I was, um, I'll be serving as the second Vice Chair and, um, really was interested in some of the recent updates and information regarding the potential road uses, use charge in Washington, so the RUC. I thought that was really interesting. And, uh, also for the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization, along with Commissioner Mahia, I, um, we were able to tour the Crisis Care Center in Kirkland, um, hopefully in support of bringing a similar facility to Thurston County. Another, um, great tour that I attended was at the Dispute Resolution Center here in Thurston County. It's amazing the work that they're doing there, um, uh, mostly volunteers. And it's grown, uh, in just in an amazing, amazing, um, collaboration going on, um, in that, uh, agency. We, I attended a Superior Court briefing around juvenile justice, met with the budget team, um, and, uh, attended the Office of the County Engineer Training. Some of the other things happening for me, um, has really been around legislative and policy work. I met with, uh, Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland and Senator Patty Murray, Murray's office, um, and, uh, did some legislative testimony, testified on behalf of the, uh, of House Bill eighteen thirteen in support of, um, behavioral health crisis services and some oversight, um, shifting it to local or, um, or oversight of that, so. And then, uh, with WASAC, uh, you know, I was able to attend the Washington State Association of Counties Legislative Reception and Legislative Update. Was nominated to the nine-one-one Advisory Committee for WASAC and also appointed as primary member to the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Panel. And, um, other than that, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Uh, for the last couple of weeks, I, I attended the Internal Audit Committee meeting, TCOM Board, where we reviewed, uh, the Director's, uh, Annual Review, WASAC Legislative Meeting, along with some of my colleagues. Uh, we all attended the Board of Health meeting recently. And we just recently started off the LTAC, uh, meetings. So Lodging Tax Advisory Committee convened its first meeting, uh, just this last week. Something to note is that we have, what is it, $300,000 in requests, Matt? Four hundred thousand in requests. Uh, so that's a lot in requests and we have a hundred and fifty thousand, give or take, uh, to disperse. So there's a, there was a large influx of additional requests or larger requests. Uh, I know that just this last year, we did increase an additional two percent, but that won't, we won't realize any of that additional funding until next year. So there's gonna be some difficult discussions had. Our next meeting is coming up this next week. Uh, had my, uh, monthly meeting with the auditor and then, uh, met with District Court staff just this last, well, two days ago. Four days ago. A few days ago. Commissioner Mahia?
Thank you. Uh, okay, since our last meeting, I attended a Board of Health Executive meeting. I also attended the Association of Counties Board of Directors meeting with Commissioner Mensah. Attended intercity transit. Uh, and then, uh, I also attended the Legislative Steering Committee reception. I would like to thank Commissioner Mensah, Commissioner Grant, and Commissioner Fournier for attending. I think that it's important as a home-based county that we show up in force, and we did. Attended the Legislative Steering Committee meeting with Commissioner Fournier. Did the tour of the Connections Crisis Facility in Kirkland with Commissioner Grant, and, and that was very insightful. I was glad that Commissioner Grant was there because she has, uh, a lot of expertise that, uh, I don't have and, and was able to, I know, teach me a lot of things. Attended the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting, attended the Board of Health Policy Subcommittee meeting, and, uh, also been attending the Code of Conduct Subcommittee, Subcommittee Meetings with Commissioner Grant. Attended the Transportation Policy Board on behalf of InterCity Transit. There was a forum for, from Go Rail, uh, creating safe quiet zones. And I invited staff members as well as members from the Patterson Lake community. And it was a very, uh, insightful, uh, forum, uh, that Go Rail did. Testified on a couple of bills, uh, for the Washington Association of Counties. Uh, attended the Legislative Session Update. Uh, and then lastly, I attended the Federal Issues and Relations Committee with the Association of Counties. And that's coming up with our, uh, federal agenda for the counties. And, uh, there will be, uh, more to come on that for those who are attending the National Association of Counties, uh, Conference in March. As, uh, let's see, I also attended the NAACP meeting with Commissioner Mensah. Continuing on, uh, for a summit, uh, planning with, uh, community members and, uh, league members. Had a meeting with constituents of, uh, Boston Harbor and attended the Family Education Support Services Ascendance of Hope event.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Meeting adjourned.